Oh, I brought myself two pens. Extra prepared. So we're, um, what early? Oh, it's turned on.
One minute.
You can take a breath.
Writing as fast as I can, sorry.
All right, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Surprise for the, uh, or pledge of allegiance. I was gonna have Natalie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we need to approve the agenda. If I have a motion for that, please.
So moved, support.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Uh, and then we've got the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving on to highlights.
So we are going to have to wait till next month to hear from the ALC. Unfortunately, Ken Greenwich came down with, what the rest of us has had over the last, the last couple of months. So apologize for the late notice on that. He has a great presentation, it's gonna talk about, um, a collaboration that he has with Mandy Wallach and, uh, some PE, but we will hear about that in April.
Okay. Um, and then do we have the spotlight?
Yeah, so the spotlight on an educator, I'm not sure who is starting from the union, but this is gonna be a fun, uh, feature, kind of like our highlights with our buildings. We get to highlight our amazing, uh, teaching staff that we have, so Erin Suchek.
Good evening, I'm Erin Suchek and I'm the Vice President of the Ed- Edwardsburg Education Association. It is my pleasure this evening to shine the spotlight on two middle school educators, Alisa Liskowski and Melissa Shimansky, neither of which could be here because they're sick.
Oh no!
It's a common theme today.
Both Mrs. Liskowski and Ms. Shimansky are special needs educators, and in addition to helping students in the classroom, they both have developed programs in our building to teach students work readiness skills. Several years ago, Mrs. Liskowski, working with our food service department, incorporated a tower garden into her classroom. The purpose of the tower garden was to grow fresh herbs and vegetables that could be used in the kitchens by food service to make the food healthier. Mrs. Liskowski's students were involved in every step. They read the directions, they put the whole thing together themselves, they got the seeds started, they added water and minerals and checked and balanced pH. They grew lettuce, basil, chard, tomatoes, and sunflowers. They were excited when they saw those first little seedlings break through and they wanted to tell everybody about it, like, come see it! If you needed lettuce or tomatoes, they were more than willing to share their bounty with you. By incorporating the tower garden into her classroom, Mrs. Liskowski taught her students skills including reading and understanding directions, along with how does an aeroponic garden work around the world, as well as the benefits of gardens for other cultures. She also included graphing results and harvesting their crops and the use of those. And here's Mrs. Shimansky. These skills are readily transferable to their own lives and the world of work. And unfortunately, COVID stopped the tower garden, um, but she's trying to find a way to bring it back. So this year, Ms. Shimansky brought the idea of the Coffee Cabin to Edwardsburg Middle School. The Coffee Cabin serves coffee, tea, and hot chocolate to middle school teachers and is supervised by Ms. Shimansky, but it is 100% student-run. The students are responsible for making the drinks per specific orders from the staff, such as mine, which is always the same type of tea with a little bit of sugar. Um, the students then also are responsible for looking at pre-orders that come in each day from staff, cleaning equipment, taking inventory, and practicing the appropriate hygiene for in the workplace. They also deliver to classrooms and the students who work in the Coffee Cabin are a blend of general education mentor students and special education students who are learning specific job skills, including scheduling, inventory, and how to work with other people in the workplace. In order to qualify for these jobs, they had to interview and complete an application with Ms. Shimansky and have three teachers recommend them to the position. They also had to go through the interview process and if they chose not to complete it, they had to contact her and resign in person, not just not show up. Students, um, let's see, who participated are excited, they are diligent, they come in every day with a smile and say, "I've brought you your tea or your coffee." And one of my eighth graders delivered me the tea this morning and said with a smile, "Good morning, Mrs. Suchek," and I said, "Well, why are you so happy today?" And he responded, "I feel like I'm helping and it's the best feeling in the world." Students will be able to take these skills to the next level, potentially working in a place like Bigby or Starbucks or even starting their own coffee shop someday in the future. It is my pleasure to help bring these two amazing educators into the spotlight. So thank you, Mrs. Liskowski and Ms. Shimansky for your service. You embody what it means to be an Eddy.
And I would like to, um, suggest that as a board, we do a field trip and go get some coffee one morning so we can coordinate to make sure that it's a day, you know, that the students are prepared for the board, but that would be, I think, really cool to, and it's in the morning, so hopefully most people could, could, could make that work and start your day off with all the kids. And both of those educators at our middle school, I mean, we have so many, but those two are phenomenal individuals and we are lucky to have them at the middle school. So thank you to the union for providing that.
Thank you, that was, that was fantastic, um, and thanks Erin for, for presenting that. Now we have district assessments update, Carrie?
Tough act to follow.
I know.
Good luck with that one.
I know, right? Yeah, you can go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is, thank you.
Thank you. Good, I'm good, how are you? Good. Thank you. I know. She's having a great time on vacation. Thank you.
So just a quick update on, um, some data that we provide you earlier in the year. We have some K8 data to provide for you now after we've done our assessments in iReady. So I gave you two sheets and I'm, I'm gonna show you kind of how to read them by looking up here. This is reading and if you look, this is window one, which would be the fall session, and this would be the most recent, which is the winter session. And then if you look in the middle, and it's really hard to read up here, that's why I provided you some paper copies, it reads as, so tier one, green, in reading, the primary went from 19% that were proficient to 51% that are proficient, and that's both K1, KN1. So if you look at the yellow, in tier two, they went from 77% that were yellow to 47% that were yellow, which is good, cuz of the, the yellow and the red, you want that number to decrease, and the green, you want to increase. And for the red, you see they went from 4% to 1%. So you'll also see on the, on the right-hand side, it provides, provides for us placement domains so we can look to see, um, where we're sufficient and where we need some more work. You'll see a common theme when you go through the reading of vocabulary, which is also one of the goals that the school improvement teams are working on and we use this data continually within our buildings and our MTSS teams. So the first page was, um, primary and it was K1. The second page in the packet is Eagle Lake. Same sort, sort of story here. You'll see the green went from 37% in the fall that were proficient to 51% in the winter. Tier two, um, went from 36% to 32%, and tier three went from 37% to 17%. The next page we have there is the intermediate. Same sort of story here. Again, making progress in tier one, which is where we wanna see the progress, from 32% in the fall to 40, 44% now. Tier two, 42% to 35%. Tier three, which is the red, 25% to 20%. The next page is middle school. Keeping in mind that not, um, oh, I did take it off. There was, I did have ninth and 10th graders on here cuz we do use this for special education also at the high school, but I took it off here so it doesn't read that. But in tier one, we went from 56% or from 48% proficient to 56% proficient. In tier two, which is the yellow, we went from 22% to 17%. And in the red, we went from 30% to 27%. The next packet I gave you is the math. First page being the primary again, same sort of story here. We're looking to see that the green is growing in the, um, winter assessments and is shrinking from the fall in the yellow and the red. So you'll see tier one went from 13% proficient to 38% proficient. Tier two, 82% proficient to 61. And tier three from 5% to 1%. Second page, we have Eagle Lake again, grades two and three. From 23% proficient in the fall to 44% proficient. Tier two from 51% proficient to 45% proficient. Tier three from 26% proficient, or, I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong. Tier two from, went from 51% not proficient to dropping to 45. The red went from 26% in the red column, not proficient, to 11%. Sorry about that. Intermediate. Again, same sort of story. Broke from the green from 28% to 49%. In the fall, from 48% not proficient to 38%. And for tier three, the red, from 24% to 13%. All good growth. And the middle school for math. Tier one from 32% proficient to 42, 40% proficient. Tier two, dropping from 36 to 32%. And from tier three, 31% to 27%. Middle school, keeping in mind that our highest math achievers don't test. They have already tested out of the math in this, so just keep in mind that there's more green here than you get to see because they've already tested out. Just a very quick synopsis, we're gonna kind of follow up from what we talked about in the fall. Um, it's very typical that in the wintertime, we all go, "Gosh, we're not making math fast enough." But we are, we are, and then in the springtime, you look again and then you see the big growth.
Carrie, question for you. So I'd really be, I'm curious, because obviously this is iReady and iReady does not go to the high school level. We were, we've talked about, actually when we were in the work session, about more data or whatever. Would it be possible to understand kind of these same concepts at the high school level?
Yes, we actually sent, um, Mr. Born and Mrs. Braxton and Mr. Malander to a conference, what, a couple weeks ago? In iReady and they are rolling out a high school version of iReady and actually redoing the middle school and trying to make that more age appealing for the sixth and eighth graders and adding a high school component to this. So we're excited to see that. They piloted this year, um, I'm glad we didn't sign on to do it this year cuz they're reporting that they had some technical glitches, so next year they'll be up and rolling and ready to go, so.
That's great, I mean, I, I think this is amazing data, but I think this would be a nice view for the board to understand all the different schools. And, you know, I mean, per our last discussion, I think that'd be really great to understand.
The great thing about this is it gives us three benchmarks in there that we can do. We don't have that at the high school right now. However, coming up in the next, uh, week after, um, spring break, we'll be doing SAT, PSAT, um, step testing and all that in, in the next month or so.
And then you'll present that then to the board, okay?
But remember, some of that data is embargoed until the fall, so.
Oh, yeah.
So that big data push that I give you in the fall is because all of that's embargoed.
You think I'd remember this, but there's a lot, yeah. Thank you.
So were any of these surprises to you?
No, um, just from seeing the data year after year after year. Winter, again, wintertime always makes, all of us would tell you, it makes a change just cuz we wanna see, right, 90%, 100%, but this is typical. One of the things that Mr. Malander was just sharing with me at that conference is they learned that it's typical to have stretch growth of like possibly 25% at the end of the year and, and in the summertime this last year, the Eagle Lake got, um, announced to be a super stretch school, which is 50% or above in their stretch growth. So these are, while they're, I look at them and go, "Gosh, that's too much yellow, too much red." It, it's on track.
That might answer my question. It's great to see the growth within the same group of students, but I do notice for both math and reading, it seems like as we go up in grade level, our red gets a little higher. Is that typical?
It is, because of the, the standards and things, um, that happens every year and that's something that we've even questioned at iReady, is, hey, we feel like we're really making a ton of progress in chemistry, but we're, it doesn't seem like we're making quite as much as 678, and that's typical. So then when we go and look at the standard scores and all that, you'll see that the growth for them and the stretch growth as the grades go up gets smaller and smaller.
Is it possible for you to put like what the averages or, like the state average?
Yeah.
As a comparison?
Yeah.
That'd be really cool to see kind of where that stands.
We can break this data down too by, um, subcategories. So when we look at it at school improvement, we look by, you know, um, by male, female, by, um, socio-economical, we look at all the data, we look at, and then be able to break it down from there.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Carrie. Any other questions for, Mr. Maguire? Well, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Now, a really exciting time. Wanna recognize one of our board members, Chelsea, who, if anybody knows anything about, anything that goes on in this board, there's one person that's the go-to for most things to do with this board, and that's Chelsea, because she has taken a lot on herself to take a lot of classes and to really understand how to work the board, where to go to for policies, all these things. So, uh, you know, it's really my privilege today to recognize her as she's attended the classes and been, um, recognized as a Level 3 Award of Distin- Distinction. As she's completed both the Levels 1 and 2, so it's a total of four advanced CBA classes and a minimum of 208 education credits, which is unbelievable and we really appreciate your dedication to that cuz, um, that's more than I think we've ever had on this board.
I would say typically, that takes many times on a board to achieve that level, um, through MASP.
Yeah, so we'd like to come up and, and recognize you and.
You know, we like our celebrations, so. And add this to your wall. But seriously, it does, for those of you who aren't familiar with, um, MASP classes, it's very much like taking college-level classes that you go to. So in a way, this is like earning a school board degree and it normally takes someone being elected multiple times to reach the Level 3. So, we're, we're very excited that we have such a dedicated board member. So congratulations.
All right. And now moving on to items of business.
So, uh, yes, so, um, this is an exciting board meeting that, uh, the work of, from, uh, the passing of the bond that our community supported us in last May is starting to come to fruition. So we have, um, Representative Max from Skillman here tonight, but we are looking to, uh, approve, uh, the bid approvals that have come in for our Eagle Lake renovation, as well as the primary and intermediate. So at Eagle Lake, this will include, um, all of the flooring will be done, the asbestos will be removed, um, we will have a secure vestibule put in, uh, and the bathrooms, which are in much need of repair, will also be redone. So, um, come next fall, Eagle Lake will look like a whole new building. There's a lot to accomplish this summer, which is why we're here to, to get the, the bid approval, um, from the board. And then at the primary and intermediate, this will also include secure vestibules at both buildings. There'll be some minor asbestos removal, um, as well as part of that. And this doesn't, this approval doesn't include the pickup-drop-off loop. That will be coming, but just to make sure that, that is clear, so that will be coming to the board here shortly, uh, as well as the middle school and high school. Well, those, uh, bids will be, um, open soon and then we will be meeting again in April to approve those. So I don't, I hope the board has had a chance to review all of the bids, um, for these. Max, is there anything that needs to be added?
No, um, I just wanna start by thanking everyone for letting us work with you. I feel very confident with all the bids we've received. We have a ton of experience working with the contractors. I think the majority have worked in the district before, so I feel good about it.
Does anybody have any questions about the bids or? Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the bid as recommended?
I will make a motion, I'm super excited. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, any questions or comments, discussion? Okay, hearing none, everybody, does this have to be a roll call? Okay, so roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Natalie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
And Nick?
Yes.
All right.
And I do wanna quickly just say a thank you to, um, Gail Enders and Chris Neff and their team because this has required a lot of work on their part to get all the information, uh, to have like the pre-bid walkthroughs, to go through and review everything. I think Chris has sat and I don't even know how many hours of meetings at this point, but I couldn't have done it without, um, them leading the way to make sure that we could be here tonight to approve these so that we can get started on, um, all that the community has given to us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do I need to do a separate one for the primary?
Probably, just, yes.
So also, we need to have a motion to approve the primary and intermediate renovations, bid approval as well?
So moved, support.
Support. Thank you.
Uh, Nick?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tammy?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion? And now, we've got the approval of a school bus purchase.
Yes, so, and another exciting thing coming from the business office and the depart- or the transportation department. As part of the budget amendment, we had budgeted to add a bus to be able to stay on adding one to our fleet as we do have, um, kinda like our roofs have a, a master plan of how long buses should be on the road to transport our kids safely. So we have one that is on order as long as the board approves it and then hopefully we'd be able to take possession of it at the earliest even, possibly here in April. So, um, we're coming, since it's over our threshold, coming to the board to seek approval, for, even though we've budgeted for it, for, uh, a bus. Anything to add at all, Chris?
I'll make a motion.
I was gonna say, we met.
Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead Natalie.
Hey, we met as a subcommittee on Friday, so we didn't really have a lot of time to get it out, but you guys will get a list of the bus we have, how many years old they are, how many miles they are, as we've replaced them, and there's kind of like five left in the gray needing to be considered in the near future. We also had some pretty good discussion about, um, looking at some alternatives for perhaps, um, smaller bus option for some of the athletics, so the big buses don't have to, we have to look into some pricing options for that and what's available and, so that's some information that.
And with that, I guess I should've mentioned the price of the bus too. So we're recommending the purchase of the bus from the Holland Bus Company in the amount of $171,878,000. So buses are expensive.
Yes.
Any questions or discussion on this? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to support the new bus purchase.
Okay. Support. And this will also be a roll call vote. Uh, Natalie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And Tammy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, so that motion passes, that's good. All right, moving on now to tuition rates.
So I'm making the recommendation for the board to approve, uh, the tuition rate, basically that we don't yet know what it is, but that it will be based on the state's set foundation allowance. So this year, that was $9,608. There's a possibility that might be increased for next year, but there's also a good chance that we might not know what that amount is prior to the end of the year and for families to be able to plan, we want to at least put out that it will be at a minimum $9,608 with the chance that it might increase.
Any questions or discussion?
Well, the only thing I would say is, so in the past, we have grandfathered almost in the families that were already at a set rate. I know at one point, we did that. Is that a discussion point, Courtney, or?
So what we have done is for, um, students who, um, are, um, staff members, kids, there, there's different grandfather rates for that. So if they were before a certain time, it's a certain percentage of that, and then they're after that, it's a different percentage of that. So that we do, um, have included in the motion as well, so there is that piece. Just given the volatility of, of knowing what our, uh, funding is, we do recommend that we follow that kind of state-set amount. However, it shouldn't, if, right now, the projections that are out there is that it could go up to $10,000 per pupil, which would be an increase of a little less than $400. I don't foresee it being, I would love it to be more than that for the amount we're getting per pupil, but I think best case scenario.
When do we get that amount, like, I don't?
So it depends, um, and this year, un-
Everything else, it's like, we're backwards, we're behind.
We're at the, we're at the mercy of the state. So that process has started with the governor put out her budget, um, which does have the per pupil funding at about $10,000. However, uh, which would be for, for this case. However, in terms of our funding, you also have to look at the categoricals, you have to look at retirement rates, you have to look at all of that. So it's a little misleading with the $10,000. When you look at everything else, it most likely would equate to about a wash for Edwardsburg with that. Then we also have the houses put out their budget, which is even less, um, and doesn't go into a lot of detail. What we're hearing is there is a very good chance that we could be approaching the start of next year not knowing what funding we'll be getting at the state level at this point.
Okay.
Well, we would keep our current students, our tuition students at the same level that they are now. It would just be for new incoming.
New students, yeah, okay. And you, you actually phrased that better, that, that was kinda the question I was asking, but yeah. Because I know, like, parents that might, I have multiple kids in the district, they're budgeting, right, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion on that? Okay, another roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Oh no, I think I have to get out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think somebody has to make a motion first.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
All right.
Support.
Support, okay, great. Tammy?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, moving on to the school calendar.
Okay, so you all, um, have received the school calendar. This was work between our, um, administrative negotiating team and the union. Some of the things are outside of our control, uh, from the county calendar, such as, so, you know, don't, don't come after the messenger for when, um, the county-wide spring break and winter break is. That is not something we, um, choose or change. So we did try to take into account, uh, from the feedback from last year, uh, from both teachers and the board and the community. So we avoided, um, an election Tuesday by moving when we had parent-teacher conferences, which actually worked out as well too because our recognition, recognition luncheon for our awesome staff and all their years of service, we found to be too rushed with the end of the day, so we've now moved, uh, been able to move that as well. We did realize with our late starts, they're important to keep, but that there are a few months where they tended to be problematic. Coming to school with the start, having one right away, we, we took that out in September, along with testing in April. The, the schools have done a great job planning around the one we have coming up in April with all the state testing, but it wasn't ideal, so we also, uh, removed that. But we have to have 180 student days of instruction along with the hours, so that's where our calendar comes from. So that's where our calendar comes from.
Any questions or discussion on?
I think, one thing that I'd just love to, maybe Courtney to like expound on is, I question, why two half days? Then a day off and then the Monday off because of parents that say, I'm just gonna take my child out and go on fall break. I did it. I get it. Um, I think it's important to better understand, just for everybody who's watching or in the audience, the half days and the hours that it matters to us to meet those.
Those half days count towards that hundred and eighty days. We still have to hit that hour amount, but we have, um, you know, the hours, we had enough in our, our calendar before that we were able to do the late starts. So the hours were never our issue. Our kids, we provide, you know, a good healthy day of instruction, um, but hitting those days, uh, those half days do count towards those hundred and eighty days. So for example, if we combine the two half days into one day off for students, uh, that would mean we would have to find another day or go a day longer in June to meet that hundred and eighty day requirement. So that's where the half days in our schedule come from.
Thank you. I didn't understand.
Yeah, it, it doesn't totally make sense, but that's the way the state has it.
My only question about the calendar was, I know that we're trying something new with graduation this year.
So hold that to the next.
Oh, okay.
It was on the calendar, so I didn't know.
So I have something to add about, about grad- I have something to add about graduation too, so. Great question.
Any other questions on the, uh, calendar?
How do the snow days work into the hundred and eighty?
So we are given, um, basically forgiven six snow days per year.
Four is the minimum.
Uh, and then we can apply for a waiver, like we're doing this year, for up to an additional three days. Um, we'll be applying for two days for the majority of our buildings. We have a little extra time. We'll be asking for forgiveness from Eagle Lake from when we had, um, the small kitchen fire. Um, even though we were in session, um, our auditors have said, well, you know, you, it wasn't quite normal enough for it to count as, as a full day at Eagle Lake. Um, but then those are sent, so I'll be applying for that this week. I wanted to make sure, after seeing some snowflakes last week, that we were done with them. Um, but we're in a good spot to have those approved because we don't count any professional development as student instruction time. Our student instruction time is our student instruction time. So we should, we should get those forgiven as well. So we shouldn't have to go any longer in June. But good question.
Any other questions? Alright, hearing none. We have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Alright. Uh, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, motion passes. And now on to graduation.
On to graduation day. So, um, one thing that has come up that we're actually going to, we're recommending to the board to wait to set the graduation date, uh, till our next meeting, is we want to have some further discussion and we didn't have time, um, to gather all the information needed to have that meaningful discussion on whether we want to keep the graduation date the Thursday before Memorial Day or hold it the Friday before Memorial Day. So still that same timeframe, so families can still go ahead and plan for next year for, um, you know, if they want to have that graduation party that weekend and book things, but we do want to look and see and just have some discussion on from the board, um, from, um, the families, from, uh, administration to see if it's better to still hold it on that Thursday or move it to the Friday.
Do we have to set it next month? I mean, I want to give families time, but is there room to get through it and see how it goes or?
We could do that. I would, I would just say there will be some anxious families who, with, um, you know, current juniors who want to be able to book different, different things. And we also then are in competition too for booking things like our sound for graduation, for anything, um, for, um, project graduation, for looking to book things for next year, that type of thing would, would hold us up a little bit. But that, that can also be discussed. But, um, we just are saying right now, we're not recommending to the board to set the graduation date for next year until we've had a little bit more discussion on the pros and cons of when it is and, um, when it could be.
So you want discussion now or you want us to just?
We can set, we need, because we also need to get some additional information from our vendors such, you know, can we get sound on either of the days or is there one where they're like, we already have six schools, we wouldn't be able to lock into that? So we wanted to have that information to present as well for that discussion, just so that everyone had all of the facts and we don't have that information yet.
How long do you think until we'll have that?
We can probably get it by next week.
Okay.
It's, next week is spring break. Two weeks.
Well, we will have the meeting on April seventh. Would you want to do it then?
I don't know if we need to do it then or we could wait till our regular meeting at the end of April and then that gives people time.
Okay, so we'll hold off on doing.
That is my recommendation if the board is okay with that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, great. Alright, uh, moving on to discussion about the Berrien and Math, uh, Math and Science Center.
So just coming back, circling around to the board, um, I know I shared with the board the input that we got from, um, some previous students, some current students, some previous parents, current parents, um, and, uh, Mr. Markrell presented all the information. Last time, I know Mr. Yoder asked some really good questions too as well. Um, so just looking to the board, we have a few options. Uh, basically we can, any student who's currently in, in it, no matter what the decision, will remain in it till they either decide to come back or till they graduate from, uh, the Berrien Math and Sen- uh, Science Center. So it won't impact any of our, our current students in that program. Um, the board could elect to just have that be the last class going through, now that we've been able to add more AP options, um, and things at the high school. The other option would be to have the current eighth graders be allowed to apply for next year and then kind of have that be the ending point, um, and then look to, e- either, either of those options, we would look to try to implement some of the suggestions that the parents, um, and students gave us on how we can improve our programs here to make it, um, you know, s- more similar to a few of the, um, the items that they had brought up in terms of hands-on and different opportunities that way. Um, or the board could elect just to, uh, continue to, with the relationship we have with the Berrien Math and Science Center, um, as we have.
It would be my recommendation to continue the way that we are and then readdress it next year and see where we are after we've worked to implement a few more hands-on things. Um, I didn't, I, I think that Mr. Markrell does a fantastic job, um, with the AP classes, but with the input from the parents and the students, I'm not sure we're there yet to sever that relationship. That's just my.
Thoughts? I, yeah, I, I agree with you, um, and I would be interested in some information. This would be a job for Sean, sorry Sean, um, to understand staffing wise. Um, do we have the staff to bring it in AP and if so, are they properly incentivized to teach this? That we wouldn't like in a couple of years from now, loo- look back and go, okay, we probably shouldn't have done that. I'm just not sure, like, I don't fully understand a hundred percent like what the requirements are from a teaching standpoint. Um, and do we have, uh, teachers in these specific areas, super excited to teach the classes that we can properly, um, replace this program?
That we do. We do have, and I know that's one of the questions, um, Mr. Yoder had reached out to, um, Mr. Markrell about too and it was just recent, so those weren't able to get shared out yet to the whole, to the whole board, the follow-up questions. Um, but yes, we do have teachers already teaching the AP classes. That was one of the things that Mr. Br- Markrell was showing was that our students are outperforming in the AP classes that we offer compared to those at the Berrien Math and Science Center. The other thing is, is then there are EDDI teachers, so we have then our staff teaching our, our EDDIs versus someone that we don't have as much input or collaboration with because they're a whole separate entity. Um, which isn't, it's not bad, it's just not having our own, our own staff teach our kids.
And what is the difference in requirements, Courtney, for them to actually be a teacher at the high school versus be an AP?
You have to be trained through AP. AP is like you, it's a, it's a rigorous training that you go through to be able to teach AP, um, classes. So that's kind of almost like in a way, a kind of a way to say is like a separate certification that then a teacher has to be able to do that.
And what are the, I guess, the benefits for the teacher to do AP versus the general class?
It's just teaching a diff- it's, it's just a different class. So I think you can talk to any teacher in their, teaching's hard work. So teaching AP is hard work. Teaching, um, students who have IPs is hard work. Teaching social studies, I mean, there's no, there's no easy teaching job. They all have different pros and cons to each one and it kind of depends where the teacher's passion is to do that. A teacher who's really passionate in that area um, and, and really loves working, um, with the AP curricula, like that, that's their passion to do that. Just like you would with a student who, or a, a teacher who's working with students who, um, have some extra needs. So it just, it just depends. Teaching is hard.
Will it require adding more AP courses, like the, the number of classrooms teaching it?
Right now.
Are there teachers for those?
Yeah, right now, the number of students that we have that go to the Math and Ber- the Berrien Math and Science Center each year wouldn't warrant a whole new class. We would be able to take them in the classes we have offered. We're always, or the high school's always looking for, um, additional AP classes they can offer. If we get new teachers in who have a passion for something, we look at offering that. If students bring or staff bring an area that might be a good AP section to add, we look to see if we can get the student numbers to support that. Um, so we're always looking at adding where we can, where we see student interest and staff interest.
And the Math and Science Center is offered ninth grade, right? So would the AP courses be offered in ninth graders too or would they be pushed off to a typical eleven, twelve year?
They would, it, there's different AP classes, um, depending on the year, not typically in ninth grade.
Okay. But are they required to take those courses? Or they just let, I mean, if you take a, I mean, I could speak on behalf of the English Department. If you take nine, ten gen English, can you get into an AP at that point?
Yeah, it might be more of a leap to get in there, but we don't, like you, there, we have kids that take AP classes who didn't take honors classes. Yeah. Because you do want to make sure kids are prepared to handle it, because it is a rigorous class in a different way than some of the other classes are. Because you're really working to prepare to take that AP test. So there, you know, for example, in English, there are certain ways you're writing, you know, to be able to score, to earn the college credit on those AP tests, which is a tougher kind of timeline for things versus, um, you know, some of our other English courses where there might be a little bit more wiggle room to expand on topics and, and do that reteaching and whatnot.
And especially for the sciences, they're taking basically, uh, like a first level class of like physics and then they take physics AP. So that's why the freshmen don't do it, not because they, they don't have that foundational class.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have to say, I think it's been a great program for our district for a long time, but I also look at the hires that we've made with the intention of expanding our AP classes. And, um, I, I think that it's, there's always going to be some resistance to cutting this program, but I look at, I think we've consistently, our own students have outperformed those in the same classes. And so I, I'm gonna have to say that I, I like the idea of allowing those to finish out, but I'm not sure what the, this program is bringing to our students at this point that we don't offer. So.
Um, I would say I'm leaning towards, um, kind of tabling it for one more year and just to give ourselves time to evaluate our, what we currently have and where our gaps might be. Um, I know Mr. Markrell is gonna talk to some of the kids. So in the responses, we got great responses from a lot of the kids that were doing it, which were all overwhelmingly positive. Um, but in the questions, he had mentioned that we have had quite a few kids who started in the program and then have moved back to the school and those are the kids I would love to hear from. Um, because I think they'll give us a lot of good insight on, um, you know, why they made that decision and how our, um, what we offer compares to their. So, um, definitely, I think we've got the quality, um, instruction and it might be some of the larger, um, hands-on things that maybe, um, not knowing a ton about the program, but trying to kind of glean some information from the people, uh, feels like maybe that's some areas that we could make some improvements on.
Okay.
Um, so I'd be up for, you know, setting a, a year here to really look at things and evaluate it and make sure we have a good transition plan.
I think from what I've heard, most people kind of feel that way at this point. Is that right?
Are we looking, just for clarification on, on my part, um, are we saying one more year of students to allow that time for that transition? Or are we literally just tabling it and continuing on and revisiting next year? Just because trying to plan and schedule for things moving forward, um?
I think at this point, from what I'm hearing, it's table for one whole year to kind of revisit next year to make the whole decision and kind of leave things as it was for the next year is what I'm hearing from everybody. That's what I'm hearing so far. Now, I, I think that if there is other information that you think could be brought to the board, we could table it for another month or, or something if there are other things that.
Scheduling, that's just hard to, like, we have to, in terms of secondary scheduling that's going on.
Right. The survey was definitely overwhelmingly positive about it. And, uh, you know, we've had people get up and talk to us and, um, you know, from that, all the aspects, it, it has been very positive from, from everyone.
I thought that we had discussed possibly having like a town hall too to.
We, I think what we discussed was, start with the survey, see if that gave enough information, um, with the town hall. Again, the people who are currently in it, I think would reflect positively on it. I think if you talk to the students who are currently in our AP classes at the high school, would reflect positively on that. Um, and then surveys you do, like you have to take that piece of, make sure to look at who's responding um, and what years did they go through it, um, versus, because not all of those were current people in there. A lot of them were students who had gone through, our parents who'd had students go through years before. Well, we had a very different setup of AP classes years before, just as they had different instructors there years. Um, so that, that's just one thing to think of. I'm not, just frankly, I mean, we could have, we could bring people back in. I'm not sure if we'd get additional information from what we've collected. I think we got a, a good feel for what they really, um, felt were strengths of the Berrien Math and Science Center that would be more of, I think, bringing it back to the strategic plan subcommittee to take that information on how can we incorporate that into some of the, um, things we're already doing at the high school? Just to, I mean, we can always improve and get better, but I think that would be a good place to bring that information back, um, to the curriculum, uh, strategic plan subcommittee.
That sounds like a good idea, but I just hate to take away an opportunity from our students before we have a structure in place.
But one of the options was to let eighth graders go and then phase out the next five years.
Yes.
Yep.
So we would have three or four years to get, a couple of years to get up and running.
Till, yeah, till that eighth grade group would technically hit where more of those AP classes are offered.
And is it always a four-year program to go there? Like all four years or?
I think so.
Students go there for a couple of years.
Berrien Math and Science Center, if they commit. But I think one of, or maybe correct me wrong what you're asking, we don't have students who say in eleventh grade decide to go to the Berrien Math and Center.
Well, I was thinking more from the, because I think what Kevin was kind of alluding to was, they don't, we don't really have the AP for the first couple of years and, you know, would somebody be able to go?
Taking necessarily the AP classes there either on the freshman year.
Okay.
I love.
I do like the idea of getting some feedback from those that have exited the program.
That is.
On why and what they have experienced being back in the classes here. I think that could give us some really good insight as we do start to set some of those plans in place of how we move forward.
And we don't necessarily know how long it would take us to get that feedback, right? So even tabling it by a month, does that give us enough time? I don't know. Does that give us enough time? I don't know, and I realize from a planning perspective and Brian, all due respect, like you presented great data, like that was really, really helpful. And and everything, so it isn't anything against that, but I'm just wondering if we could actually gather that within a month to hit. The deadlines of planning and schedules and things like that, I don't know.
Right, I would hate to put a timeline right that close of a timeline, I would let the incoming freshman. Go ahead, the eighth grader sign up and then revisit it at a later date.
I think that's what we're saying, right?
The current eighth graders don't know if they're going to the Math Science Center or not, there's an application process, they may get accepted, they may not get accepted. So there's no guarantee that they're even going and they won't know that till almost the end of the school year. So we do a schedule based on them being here rather than based on them going, so it doesn't affect the scheduling process for us. Because we're either gonna have seven hours or we're gonna take that seven hours and stretch it down to three hours, so it will not affect what we're doing. And the thing that I I would encourage you to think about is, when you took it, when you look at state data and compare ourselves to other districts. What are those districts doing with the Math Science Center, the St. Joe's, the Portage Centrals, the Madawans? They're teaching their kids in-house and they're teaching them AP courses, and so that's something to really consider. If you want to talk about data, where we want to be as a district, we can do it internally as opposed to set up externally.
What's the big fear of heading this program on for for you guys? And switching, because it would save us a lot of money as a district.
I just hate to take an opportunity away from kids, I think that it it. It takes all different avenues to find a child's spark and I hate to take away that opportunity when it's there.
I guess where I'm struggling is to understand what that, I I understand some hands-on stuff, which I would love to see more for all of our students. Especially when it comes to the sciences, we had that conversation during the curriculum selection. But I guess where I'm struggling is I'm not sure what opportunity is being taken away when we're outperforming them.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking too is, I mean, when you look at the numbers, our kids do better at Edwardsburg than they do. Typically at Berrien Springs, or the Berrien Center, not Berrien Springs, but. So when you look at the numbers and we're doing better, what, and we would save money and they would be part of the eddy culture more. To me, that that's all positives that I feel would really be good for our school system, I'm. I'm just trying to figure out what are we missing and the hands-on is the only thing that, in the science part, it seems like there is a lot of that. And I guess my question to that is, is there a way that we can, by saving some of this money, that that would be able to go in towards. Maybe making better advances in in our hands-on program.
And I think we've already started that process through the new.